Good evening and welcome to the Akron Public School Board. We'll call this meeting to order for January 14th, 2019. Role call please.
Mr. Alexander.
President.
Mrs. Baylor.
Here.
Mr. Bravo.
Here.
Mrs. Lasher.
Here.
Mrs. Mansfield.
Here.
Mr. Miller.
Here.
Reverend Walker.
Present.
All right, joining us tonight for the Pledge of Allegiance, since it's a special night, is my son Aiden. He's gonna get us kicked off if he'd come up here and help lead us if everyone could stand, please.
(Inaudible) 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 (Inaudible)
After what Mr. Ryan Pendleton describes as a couple of long years, our first order of business tonight is to elect a new president of this board. So I would like to open it up to the board for nomination.
I recommend Reverend Walker as president.
I'd second.
Thank you. We have a nomination and we have a second. Are there any other nominations? Any other nominations? All right, we are closing nominations. We have a nomination and a second for Dr. Reverend Curtis T. Walker, Sr., as president of the Akron Public Schools Board of Education. Role call please. Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mrs. Baylor.
Yes.
Mr. Bravo.
Yes.
Mrs. Lasher.
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Reverend Walker. Do you have someone to swear in?
Yes. This time I would ask Reverend Ronald Fowler, pastor at Meredith's Church of God, who was swearing in. If I asked my wife and family members, they would come. I'm holding in my hand a Bible that was given to me back in the early '70s, but it was given to me from a board member, Louis Fox, who was a board member for the Hartford School System for over 30-plus years. So it has a lot of significance to me.
(Laughter) I'm gonna read an oath for which your proper response will be "I do." Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio, and that you will perform faithfully the duties as president of the Akron Board of Education to the best of your ability, and in accordance with the rules and regulations of the Board of Education and laws now in effect, and herein after to be enacted during your continuance in office, and until your successor is elected and qualified? Do you respond by saying "I do"?
I do.
Congratulations.
(Applause) Mr. President. Reverend Walker is also a past board member and president for several years at Akron Public Schools, so that needs to be... I'm sorry, Fowler. Fowler. So we need to make sure that we recognize him as a past board member and president.
And I just wanna acknowledge, if it were not for several persons, and I've tried to invite a few this evening, one of which is Reverend Dr. Ronald Fowler, I wouldn't be on the school board. He and Judge James R. Williams called a younger person to lunch one day and said, "We want you to run for school board."
Yep.
And I looked at them and said, "Must be crazy." What are you... (Laughter) I'm new to the city. I haven't been here long. But they saw something I didn't see, and they have been extremely supportive, and I thank them for all that they have done, and especially this young man for encouraging me to run for school board, and that almost 20 years ago. So we thank you. Mr. Lee Hunter, who was my treasure, first treasure. And Marion Key, who's not able to be here as a former schoolteacher at Firestone for many, many years. And then Joe DeLattimer, who also helps support us. I thank them for all that they have done to make this event, this opportunity, possible. So thank you so very much.
Thank you. (Applause)
So if you'll permit me, as I pass this gavel tonight and what it represents to Reverend Walker, I first want to thank him for his service as vice president this last year. I appreciate his continued commitment to the students and families of Akron Public Schools, to the board and our administrative team, and to the faculty and staff of Akron Public Schools. Thank you for a fantastic year serving alongside me, for your guidance and your experience. I also want to say thank you to this board. Looking back on my last three years of service and leadership to this board, I'm absolutely amazed by all that we've accomplished together. We've worked to expand the number of seats we have available for early childhood education. We've opened new buildings. We've closed buildings that were well beyond their useful life. We've successfully merged high schools. We've continued to successfully implement our $800 million Imagine Akron CLC project, with new buildings still to be opened. We're in the process of merging two administrative buildings into one brand-new, state-of-the-art administration building, complete with a customer engagement center. We've dealt with the opioid crisis and its effects on our community, on this board, and on the children and families that we serve. We went one to world and put technology in the hands of every student and every board member in Akron Public Schools. We launched the I Promise School and the transformative college and career academies, and in the process, we forged new partnerships, and we've strengthened and breathed new life into existing ones, partnerships that will continue to support our students for years to come. We've managed to thrive academically and avoid academic distress district-wide. We've kept our promise from a few years ago and managed our financial resources responsibly, updated an underperforming investment policy, and stretched every dollar to ensure that we would stay off of the ballot for as long as possible, and we're still doing that. We have better defined what it means to be equitable in our district by passing a comprehensive equity policy, thanks to board member Bruce Alexander. We've taken a giant leap in terms of how we engage students by appointing student representatives to this board, thanks to the leadership of Lisa Mansfield, and welcome to all of you. To better serve our students and our staff, we've been meeting with the community to determine what they view as the portrait of a graduate through the lens of student behavior, safety, and discipline under the leadership of Mr. Miller. We managed to convince our superintendent that Akron is and should continue to be his home. We've made efforts to strengthen the relationship between this board and our faculty and staff by being proactive and reaching out and meeting directly with them. We've said goodbye to some veteran board members, and we've welcomed a few new faces to our team, and we even made it onto a Nike commercial. And these are just a few of the things that we've accomplished in the most recent years, and I couldn't possibly be more proud to serve with all of you and to have accomplished all of these great things together. Your support, your guidance, and most importantly, your friendship have meant so much to me. Thank you for all that you do so often that goes unnoticed. I also want to say a quick thank you to Superintendent David James, Assistant Superintendent Ellen McWilliams-Woods, who was there. The executive team sitting around this room and those that left so we could give up some seats to our parents, to all of the faculty and staff for their tremendous support and responsiveness. And I finally want to say thank you to my family for giving me the extra time it takes to do what I love. What we do matters, and why we do it matters even more. I'm surrounded by people who understand why we do what we do and who make leadership look so easy. So to all of you, thank you. I look forward to continuing to serve you as a board member, just a few seats over from here. So Reverend Walker.
(Inaudible) (Applause) Thank you. Patrick Bravo. And I want to thank my family as well, my wife, and my daughter, Vanessa and daughter Rashara, and the boss of us all, Kayla. I want to thank her granddaughter for being present here today. So at this time, we're going to move on to who shall we have as our vice president.
Mr. President, I would like to nominate Tim Miller for vice president. Tim and I met first in 2011 while running for a seat on this board, and it didn't take me long to see Tim's passion for the district or to recognize the knowledge and skills that he would bring with him to the table. I've been blessed, I don't want to serve with him as a member of this board, but also on the finance committee and in leadership together on this board. He's continued to impress me with not only with his commitment to this board, to this district, sorry, but also his focus and his dedication for his work as a board member and his leadership. I've come to know him and his family well, and I know his wife Katie, as well as his daughters Lindsay, Ally, and Casey will support him. And so with that, Mr. President, I am honored to nominate Mr. Tim Miller for vice president of the Akron School Board. Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded that Mr. Tim Miller would be nominated as the vice president of the Akron School Board. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? The nominations are closed on the one said name, Mr. Tim Miller. Role call.
Mrs. Baylor.
Yes.
Mr. Bravo.
Yes.
Mrs. Lasher.
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Reverend Walker.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Congratulations.
I am extremely proud and happy to be able to swear in my fellow co-laborer on the Akron Board, his wife, his family. I have grown to love and care for them and appreciate his work that he does, and especially the unique things that he brings to this board, that he brought from the very day that he was elected and to now. And I think our partnership as president, vice president, will do this board well, and so we thank you for the service that you've already rendered, but we really appreciate the service that you're going to render this year. Mr. Miller, do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio, that you will perform faithfully the duties as vice president of the Akron Board of Education to the best of your ability and according to the rules and regulations of the Board of Education and the laws now in effect, and herein after to be enacted during your continuance in said office until your successor is elected and qualified? And you will respond by saying "I do"?
I do.
Welcome.
(Applause)
Reverend Walker, thank you very much. I look forward to the next 12 months working with you as your vice president. I do want to thank my colleagues and peers on the board for your confidence in me and electing you to this leadership role. I do have to say thank you to my wife. She could not meet her tonight. She had another commitment on the fundraising committee for another nonprofit at Akron, and she felt she needed to get there, so I appointed that as well. My daughters are all out of town, nowhere around here, so they couldn't be here, but I thank them too. So thank you very much.
And now, we have a very unique and historic event that will take place in just a few moments. As President Bravo had mentioned, one of the things that we have accomplished this year was to have an ag cop committee to look at how we might be able to involve students on the Board of Education. The committee, under the leadership of Lisa Mansfield, has met tirelessly along with Dreama Whitfield and Mr. Johnson and other staff members who she will acknowledge when she comes forward. So we want to thank her especially for the special effort in a short period of time to garner persons who were interested. It was a wonderful group of young people who came together, and now what you see before us is another wonderful group of young men and women who have decided to dedicate themselves to serve on the Akron School Board. This is the first time. This is historic, and we want to thank again Mrs. Mansfield and for everyone who was able -- former president Bravo, and everyone who was able to bring this about, so that this day, from henceforth, we will have student representatives, a representative from each of our high schools and especially school, to help us, help you, and the superintendent and treasurer, to run the district in an excellent manner. Sister Mansfield.
Wonderful. I do want to acknowledge there were several students that helped on the committee. I didn't bring all their names with me, and if I start naming them, I will forget some because I'm so excited tonight. They were an integral part of putting this team together. They were incredibly important to this process. They gave us a student voice right off the bat that said, "We think this is what we need." And I also want to thank the students who reached out to us that really put this nugget into our heads, right? It wasn't just being at a national school board conference and saying, "Wow, other people do this. That's amazing." It was the students that were already coming forward. So people who have kind of blazed the trail for you all that were saying, "We want you to hear our voice. Here's what we want to do." And that was really something that's grown in the last two years, so we wanted to take advantage of that, and we know that you all have a lot to say. So where is... Is Miss Whitfield? Would you like to introduce each of them? Do you want to have them... Introduce them all at a time and have them come up, and I'll come up here and then we'll get them sworn in.
Hi. Our first student is Chandler Forsey. Our next student is Lam Saheb. Our next student is Monisha Way. Our next student is China Greer. Our next student is Kyrie Brunson. Our next student is Addison Johnson. Our next student is Nathaniel Smith. And our next student is Luther Bussingham. So I want to thank you all for your willingness to serve. Can you... As we go down the line, can you tell everyone which of the high schools you represent as well? Go ahead and start.
(Inaudible)
(Inaudible)
East CLC.
STEM High School.
Oh, Ballard High School.
(Laughter)
Firestone CLC.
Okay. You know this is Akron Public Schools, right? So our... Your oath is very similar to what you just heard the president and vice president say, so when we get to the end, you'll each answer by saying "I do," all right? Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States... Oh, sorry, Rachel. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio, and that you will faithfully serve as the student representatives of the Board of Education of the Akron City School District, Summit County, Ohio, to the best of your ability, advising the Board of Education on matters in the best interest of all students in the Akron Public Schools, and working collaboratively with board members and the administration to improve student engagement and better achieve a better overall experience for all students? Answer by saying "I do."
I do.
Congratulations. So I understand you guys are gonna stay for the whole meeting? Yes? And Mr. Pendleton has a place where he's going to need your signatures, so we're gonna do that when we break?
We can do that right before we break.
Okay. Before we break, he's gonna have you come to the end of the table and each sign, so don't leave before you do that, all right? Would each of you like to go down the line one more time? Sorry to take more time, everybody. And acknowledge the people that came out to see you today. Can you go and say...
My entire family, my mom, my dad, and my brothers are back there.
My family couldn't come because of the certain matter, but I'd like to thank them.
My family couldn't come here, but I'd like to thank them so much.
I have my assistant principal, Dr. Erica Floller, and my grandma, Santa Davis.
My mother, grandmother, grandfather, uncle, and aunt.
My father, my mother, and my principal, Mrs. Popple.
I have my stepdad, my mom, my older sister, my niece, my younger brother, my father back there, my twin sister.
I have my parents back there, and I know you're coming for your son, but you come from Firestone, so...
What I wanted us to do, two things real quickly. Mr. Bravo and myself and Mr. Mansfield will take a picture with the students, and then I'm gonna ask each board member to come after that's taken and stand either next to some of us, or behind your student that you will be mentoring.
This is a good shot. How much farther do you want me to go? You want to go down here?
You're good.
We have a wide lens. We won't show all the crappy details of your face, but...
Ready? One, two, three, go.
Each board member, if you will come and stand behind your...
I can't stand behind mine.
Or stand on the side of your student.
Who's gonna be in the middle? Are we in the middle?
Congratulations.
In every term, sideways. We'll be in the middle. So you are gonna face each other. We're not gonna face each other. Is that good? Are we in the middle?
They stand sideways. No faces.
How do we face the middle?
But the shortest people have to be in front. Whoever that is, I'm not gonna pick. Whoever Walker, one, two, and three. Kids tend to be a little short when girls... (Inaudible) (Inaudible)
Each student has a board member who will mentor them.
Is somebody...
(Inaudible)
All right. All right. Exhausting. Okay. (Inaudible) Let me do one more something. All right, excellent. Thank you. As you would.
(Inaudible)
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 We will, at this time, because we have parents, and this is a historic event, you might want to take pictures, you have principals, staff, so we're gonna take a 10-minute break so we can take those photos either inside or outside with your students and with family. So we'll break for 10 minutes.
Students, see me, have got your oath of office.
I believe all of our students have their packet, their information. It is the tradition and custom of the Akron School Board, once the president is retired from their office, serving as the president, that we acknowledge that by reading and giving them a proclamation. A lot of things listed on the proclamation, Mr. Bravo shared with us earlier, but I'm gonna repeat it again, so it can be officially in the records. A resolution of appreciation. Patrick L. Bravo, president, 2017 and 2018. Whereas Patrick L. Bravo has just completed his seventh year on the Board of Education of the Akron City School District, the last two years as president of this school board, and whereas during his presidency of the Akron Board of Education, Patrick Bravo provided steady leadership and actively represented the board and the district throughout the community. And whereas Mr. Bravo served on the Joint Board of Review, the board comprising of members of the City of Akron and the Akron City School District, the overseers of Akron City Schools, Imagine Akron 800 Million Building Program, and whereas during his presidency, the Imagine Akron Building Project continued with the dedication of Harris Jackson, 2017, and Case, 2018, community learning centers, bringing the total of completed buildings to 32, with Ellett and Kenmore Garfield CLCs now under construction. And whereas during his presidency, the consolidation of Garfield and Kenmore High Schools into one student body was successfully accomplished. And whereas during his presidency, the College and Career Academies of Akron, CCAA, master plan was adopted, and the district entered into partnerships as follows. Summa, Boto Academy of Leadership and Innovation, Bridgestone East Academy of Applied Engineering and Technology, Key Bank, East Academy of Business and Health Services, Kent State University, Firestone Academy of Advanced Technology and Engineering, Kent State University, Firestone Academy of Design, Kent State University, Firestone Academy of Performing Arts, Akron Children's Hospital, North Academy of Health and Human Services. And the following became sister colleges. University of Akron, Ellett, STEM High School, Akron Early College High School, Stark State College, Kenmore Garfield. Whereas during his presidency, the district partnered with the LeBron James Family Foundation to create the I Promise School, a public school which opened on July 1st, 2018, for students at risk of falling behind. And whereas during his presidency, the district purchased 10 North Main Street for the purpose of consolidating the two administrative... for the purpose of consolidating the two administrative office buildings, Conrad, Sea Otter Staff Development Center, and Sylvester Small Administration Building into one facility to provide more efficient service to the staff and public. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Education of the Akron City School District, County of Summit, State of Ohio, Section 1, that Patrick Bravo, L. Bravo, is recognized for his outstanding leadership and service as president of the Akron Board of Education during 2017 and 2018. Section 2, that sincerest appreciation is extended to Patrick L. Bravo by his colleagues. Section 3, that a copy of this resolution be made a part of the permanent record of the Akron Board of Education, and that a copy be presented to Patrick Bravo, done on the hand and signature of the Akron Board of Education, Bruce Alexander, Ginger Baylor, Morgan Lasher, Lisa Mansfield, Tim Miller, Reverend Dr. Curtis Walker, Senior, David W. James Superintendent, and Ryan Pendleton, Treasure CFO. Mr. Bokto? If you would stand there. In a conversation with Mr. Bravo, he brought an idea that we want to put into fruition from now on, that not only this resolution, but a tangible gift would be given to the outgoing president. And that would be done in the form of a gavel, that we will present, beginning with Mr. Bravo, and then preferably continue with the incoming president. Akron Board of Education, Patrick L. Bravo, president, or president, 2017, 2018, and with the Akron Public Schools logo, and a lovely memento of your leadership. Thank you. Have a motion at this time. It's been moved, properly seconded. Any questions? Comments? Roll call?
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mrs. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Lasher?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you very much. At this time, we'll have our committee assignments. And I believe all is well in this regard. For our board committee, Legal Contracts and Board Policy Committee, Bruce Alexander and Morgan Lasher. For our Finance and Capital Management Committee, Tim Miller and Patrick L. Bravo. For Instructional Policy and Student Achievement Committee, Lisa Mansfield and Ginger Baylor. Our appointment to the Ohio School Board Association Treachery, Lisa Mansfield, the alternate to the OSBA, Bruce Alexander. Appointment of liaison to the OSBA Urban School District Advisory Network, Patrick Bravo. And then the Joint Board of Review members, Reverend Walker, Tim Miller, Patrick Bravo, Lisa Mansfield. The Akron Public Schools Cluster Award Assignments will stay the same until June, I believe, July, until we agree. So Bokto, Ward 3 and 4, Tim Miller. East, Ward 10, Lisa Mansfield. Ellett, Ward 6, Morgan Lasher. Firestone, Ward 8, Ginger Baylor. Garfield, Ward 7, and Kenmore, Ward 9, Patrick L. Bravo. North, Wards 1, 2, and 5, Bruce Alexander, and Specialty Schools, myself. Our cube representative, up until this point, I know they'll make a change with their election, but that will be Bruce Alexander. Okay? At this time, we have our establishment of our board meeting dates for 2019. And I think we have a couple of areas where we might need to make some adjustment as we go along. But this is our board dates at this time. Are there any community and school reflections? I know a lot has happened in the last couple of weeks, or if you wanna take a moment, if there's any reflections you want to share? Yes, sir.
One in particular, it seems like it's been so long ago since I went to this. I had a question whether there was a meeting since then or not, but I attended along with Reverend Walker. We had School Advocacy Workshop for Parents. And we had three last year. I believe they're going to continue this year, if my information is correct. But it was, it's a partnership with Community Legal Aid for parents to come in and talk to Community Legal Aid about their students, and how to advocate for their students in a positive manner in our school buildings. A lot of the talk revolved around children with IDPs and 504s, I think it is.
Right.
And how to, you know, just be positive in conversation and move forth in a positive manner on your child's behalf. And there was a, they had, they had a record number of the family CLC meeting that evening. They were sort of blown away by how many people they had there. They had childcare for the students and food for the parents and students as well. And I know they were scrambling to get more food there that evening. But it was a very well-run, very informative workshop, and I heard a lot of positive things about it, and I hope it's something to continue to do for our parents.
Anyone else?
There were quite a few things before the holidays. I really wish that I'd been able to get to more choir events. I did get to attend the one at Firestone High School. Was also thrilled to be invited to see Dr. Hustler from Capital University. We were invited to go and watch her do a masterclass with the choirs there. And I actually took my lunch hour and got to enjoy that. If you, if you ever get invited and you, it's worth giving up lunch for, let me tell you why. And then the last thing that was a lot of fun, it was a day to run around, was at the same time, and I don't know how Deborah keeps it all straight sometimes, but at the very same time that we were doing a VEX Robotics Tournament at Firestone High School for twenty-seven schools, I don't know, something like that, twenty-seven schools. This is a program that four years ago, three, four years ago, started with five students at Firestone, and now we fill the gymnasium and have twenty-seven schools coming too. So it's really taken off. So at the same time that that was going on, on the west side, we had the joint ROTC, National, Junior ROTC Drill Meet with all of our, our junior ROTCs coming together. I know Mr. Miller and Mr. James had been there earlier in the day, for sure. But talk about two incredible things to have going on in the district on a Saturday. The buildings were definitely not at rest. I know there were lots of basketball games that day as well, and I think some wrestling. But I got to attend both of those and see our students represent our district. And so, and it's just incredibly diverse, and, and just really strong ways, showing leadership, showing, helping each other, watching the middle schoolers jump in at the VEX Tournament and reset things, and that are excited about coming up and being part of the College and Career Academies. So that was a really fun day. And kudos to both Ellett and Firestone for being able to hold those events, and for Deborah for keeping it all straight.
Well, I attended just Friday, I believe it was Friday, the Pastoral Counseling Services, they had a ribbon cutting. I didn't make it for the ribbon cutting, but I was afforded a tour of the building, and it's fabulous. And you know that they service a lot of our students. And if you get a chance to go over there, please go and see. It's just a phenomenal building, very accommodating. They're increasing staff and things like that in order to provide better and more services to our young people and other people in the community. But it is just a fascinating facility. So that was one thing. And I did have opportunity to, there's a millennial production company, and they, they perform hairspray at the Civic Theater. So I just last night went, and I enjoyed hairspray with some people I didn't know. Before I sat down, we had a blast. It was just very, a wonderful experience, because we were on the stage. We were seated on the stage, and I'm like, they're like, they'll take you up there and seat you. I'm like, what is this? This seems really weird. And so we got up there, and the space that they had to perform in was so compact and small. And I'm like, how are these people gonna get? But they did a great job. They utilized the aisles and everything, very cozy. The talent was excellent. I believe that it was more like young adults and possibly some students, but a millennial group. And I think it was just wonderful that they're starting out like this. So that's something that if you guys have an interest in, you may be able to join someday. Also attended a, the National Council of Black Women. There was a afternoon gala dinner yesterday in honoring and celebrating Martin Luther King, which these things are kicking off now. There's a lot of events that have kicked off over the weekend, and will be going on through Monday and then into next week. But at the gala, they honored several people in the community, and there was a group of our students who were being honored, because they're graduating and moving on to college. And the purpose of the event is to provide scholarships for the students. Usually a book scholarship valued at five hundred bucks. So that's nothing to sneeze at when you get to college, you guys. You could appreciate that five hundred dollars for your books, and believe me, you'll be very appreciative. So that's something else I did. I can't think of what else. There were so many other things going on. I forgot, so, but yeah.
Anyone else?
Just quickly, looking at the calendar for January is just unreal, the kind of things that are happening in the next couple of weeks. I did wanna share one thing. A documentary film company in Akron called Crepe Entertainment Group, they actually do a lot outside of just documentaries, excuse me. But they are doing a short documentary about one of our students. One of our recent graduates, Ms. Kofi. He was, I have a couple of save the date cards that I'll pass around the table. There's gonna be a premiere of the documentary on the 31st. There's a reception, you can meet Kofi, our celebrity, and also get to hear him play after the film is over. He got a scholarship at Berkeley.
Yes.
And he now is looking for some fundraising support on actually living in Boston. So really cool that they did a documentary about him, and just wanted to fly that, so everybody. But just thinking about this month is really exciting. And one thing, so the new governor was inaugurated today, and he's coming to Akron Thursday. I think that's incredibly cool. And one of the things that I think we all heard him say at the Ohio School Board Association meeting was, he wants his legacy to be about kids. So I hope he gets a lot of those questions on Thursday, and I know several of us will be there.
Anyone else? And to segue into that, thank you, Mrs. Lasher. We have been intentional, this board, in looking at how we can help our children. What things can we do to provide a foundation for them so that they can be successful? We're already looking at, and Mr. Miller has been looking at, a portrait of a graduate. But now we're wanting to take a step even further in looking at children at early age. And so we're gonna ask that we would have an ad hoc committee. And Patrick Bravo has started the process last year as president. And we're gonna ask that he would chair that Early Childhood Educational Ad hoc Committee. So we can be intentional. How can we raise not only awareness, but funds to, like Cincinnati, that has done a lot in early childhood education, to look at those areas, other schools, other districts? Again, the incoming, well, now governor, has made part of his platform to look at children, and how we're able to assist them and help them. And we need to be right there. If something's gonna happen, if funds are gonna be available, we need to have a plan to be able to take advantage of all those. So Mr. Bravo will be leading us in that area. At this time, we will have our approval of our meeting minutes, our regular meeting minutes, and special meeting minutes. Been moved?
Second.
Properly seconded. Any questions or comments? Roll call?
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Lasher?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mrs. Baylor?
Yes.
Thank you. Our superintendent's recommendations, personnel recommendations?
Mr. President, I have before me for your consideration thirty-six personnel recommendations. At this time, I am pulling item twenty-eight from consideration, and will resubmit that item at the next board meeting. And before I move approval, I'd like Kathy McVeigh to recognize one of our administrators, who will be under consideration for a new assignment.
Tonight, I'd like to introduce to you Dr. Robert Cubic. Dr. Cubic is a graduate of Windsor, local Windsor Locks High School in Windsor Locks, Connecticut. He attended Syracuse University, where he earned a Bachelor of Science degree in psychology. And later earned a Master of School Psychology, nineteen ninety-seven, in the university. Following that, he received a Doctor Philosophy degree at Kent State University. In nineteen ninety-seven, Dr. Cubic joined the Akron Public Schools as an intern psychologist in the Child Study Department. And a year later, he became a permanent employee with us in nineteen ninety-eight. During his tenure as a school psychologist, he has earned the respect of numerous building administrators. A former principal at Jennings CLC wrote in his evaluation, "Dr. Cubic is the essence of a professional." Another principal wrote, "Rob's personality, personal qualities make him very approachable, very easy to work with. He was known to be able to communicate effectively with staff and parents as they worked together to address the needs of many at-risk kids." Tonight, he's being recommended for the new coordinator of child studies. Congratulations.
Just read a brief statement. To Board President Reverend Dr. Walker, Vice President Miller, distinguished members of the Akron Public School Board of Education, Superintendent James, Dr. McGloos, fellow members of the APS community. I want to express my sincere thanks for this opportunity to serve the Akron Public Schools. First, thanks to my new supervisor, Mrs. Tandy Brady, Director of the Office of Special Education. I come to work every day grateful that our office is led by such a highly skilled, innovative, and dedicated professional. I look forward to supporting her in our mission of bringing comprehensive services and supports to our many special education students in the Akron Public Schools. Second, to Mrs. Kathy McVeigh, Executive Director of Human Resources, and her staff, with their care, consideration, and support of me as I pursue this opportunity to join our administrative team. Third, I want to thank our team of school psychologists, speech therapists, occupational therapists, and physical therapists. For more than twenty years, I've seen up close the innumerable ways that these talented and devoted professionals positively impact our students, both in their learning and in their lives. I am honored and very humbled to coordinate and support these critical efforts. Fourth, to my family, my wife, Michelle, and our four children, my mother, and my late father. The importance of education has always been at the center of our family's story. Finally, I want to add a personal note. I moved to the Akron community over twenty-five years ago in pursuit of a graduate degree at the University of Akron. When my professors learned of my interest in urban education, I'm a product of urban public schools myself. They worked hard to secure an internship for me in the Akron Public Schools. And within days of working here, I knew that I wanted my life's work to be devoted to the students and families of this community. And I have been APS proud ever since. This is a wonderful time to take on this role for the Akron Public Schools. I have such profound respect and admiration for Mr. James and Dr. Ms. Williams Woods, and our entire APS leadership team. I am thankful to every member of the board for your countless efforts in supporting our schools and giving back to this community. I pledge to you all that you will have my very best efforts in all that I do. Thank you.
And with that, Mr. President, these recommendations are in proper form, and I move their approval.
Still move? Been moved and properly seconded, roll call? Any questions or concerns? Thank you.
Mrs. Lasher?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mrs. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Next, Mr. President, I have before me for your consideration one motion and nine resolutions on the consent agenda. These recommendations are in proper form, and I move their approval.
Still move? Second?
Properly seconded. Any questions or comments?
Just wanna make a comment on item number six, about the donations listed in the board letter. A little shout-out to Mark Williamson and his staff. If you noticed this week, we got a link to a online thank you for people who were donating to Project Rise. Thank you. And I hope, I would love to see those kind of things continue. Let's thank you, sir.
I noticed that as well, and thank you, Mr. Miller. I also wanted to mention the East High Alumni Association is one of those donators, and remind the board that their dinner is coming up here soon. So if you get a chance, as the East busts her up, I'm trying to push them. And also, thanks to, this is where the, there's the grants as well, right? From Akron Community Foundation, and Margaret Holden Jennings.
Foundation and the Margaret Holden Jennings Foundation for their support of our schools. And, yeah.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? Roll call?
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mrs. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Lasher?
Yes.
And finally, Mr. President, I have before me for your consideration, five business affairs recommendations. These recommendations are in proper form, and I move their approval.
Moved. Second. Moved properly seconded. Any questions or comments?
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mrs. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Lasher?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
No report. No superintendent's report? No president's report?
Two items tonight. First, as a reminder, with the board meeting notifications, we will be having our first JBR meeting on January 28th. And you notice through your meeting invites, we've canceled a lot of those meetings. That's in large part due to the way that the contract is scheduled with instructional management progress, we talked about it, board letter. So the JBR meetings are going to be transitioned at minimum, or they're going to be, we're going to meet at a high level about construction progress, we'll review the Citizens Monitoring Committee financial reports, and we'll also review the contract that you employ through G Stevens, which is the pay applications and where the pay is going. The second item is FYI, led by Representatives Cup and Patterson, I'm presenting with them tomorrow at the State Board of Education on the School Funding Work Group, so I wanted to give you a heads up on that. Superintendent James and I have talked about doing that presentation to the board either on the 28th or one of the board meetings, now this is getting some momentum with Governor Dwyane.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Committee reports, legal contracts, board policy?
No reports tonight.
Finance and capital management?
Yes. We last met on the 17th of December, and to highlight some of the items, we were reviewing two more scholarships that we currently hold money for in the CFO's office, and talking about possibly moving those to Akron Community Foundation in very much the same manner that we did with the Judith Resnick Scholarship. So that, that will be continued discussion. We went over enrollment detail, the monthly financial report indicated that the district enrollment is, from that standpoint, is improving with the exception of one of four categories, and we took a little deeper dive into that as well, and will continue to do so. We talked about Paladina Health, and if by memory is correct, we have 1,000 of 600, 1,000 of 6,000 eligible employees and family members enrolled in Paladina, ground number, need to grow, and it's a sign that families can be proactive in their health, and that can help us be proactive with our health fund. We discussed the appropriations and budget modifications and how that affects a five-year forecast. A five-year forecast is not just a document that comes out twice a year, but it's a living, breathing, changing document constantly. And then lastly, we had a discussion on 10 North Main Street and how that's moving along, and once again talked about how the combination of the two administration buildings is going to provide cost savings to the districts, and will continue to do so, and there's gonna be other advantages of that as well. So that's the final statement of the report.
And several of us had a tour of 10 North Main Street, and to see the development of the building and how it will be, will function in a way that would, I think, bless our community and bless our staff, so that we will be able to work together under one roof. And it's moving along rather smoothly.
The furniture was being delivered today, I saw, in large trucks. And we did get to see what Mr. Pendleton looks like in a hard hat.
Instructional Policy and Student Achievement.
No report.
No report. Unfinished business?
Just an update on our Portrait of a Graduate Committee. We met, our steering committee met on the 18th of December, I believe it was, and sort of wrapping up our community, our regularly scheduled community meetings. And it appears we are going to focus in two areas at this point in time. The main things that came out of those community discussions were wanting to see us be more proactive and concentrate on parent engagement within the Akron Public Schools, and also on the positive behavior intervention and skill sets within the buildings around that topic. So I have a meeting, we're going to look at utilizing one high school to start with to sort of prototype these, and I have a meeting with the school principal this week as a matter of fact. I'm not gonna make any announcements at this point in time till I have some agreement on if they're willing to, you know, prototype and move forward on these, but the thought process is, some of this might center around our instructional coaches that we have in the high school and our family resource specialists, so stay tuned.
And for, just for our student board members, the Portrait of a Graduate is looking at the discipline in our schools. You may not be aware, but unfortunately, Akron has had a problem with high rate of suspensions, expulsions, and a lot of those were on minority students. And so we're trying to correct that, and through this committee, helping to try to figure out through parent engagement, as the chairman had said, and other ways, on how we can stem that tide, have less suspensions, less expulsions, and also move our students through that pathway through the college and careers, so that they'll be ready to graduate, go into service, job, careers, or into other areas in education. At this time, do business?
Yes, Mr. President, as you're aware, along with our board members and staff at our in-house legal counsel accepted employment with a law firm outside of the district, and so we are without internal legal counsel. My proposal is to take the firm of Retsel and Andrus and have them serve as kind of interim legal counsel. We already are under contract with them, as we are several other law firms, for an interim period to take us through the end of the fiscal year. So I would just need some concurrence, you know, on that, and proceed, have a staff member from Retsel assigned to work with our staff for those day-to-day things that come up. We still have a variety of law firms that work on these issues, and we'll continue to use those law firms for those issues, you know, regarding special ed or construction, or even with negotiations coming up. But we will need to have someone who does day-to-day things, and so my recommendation will be that we use the firm under their existing structure to provide those services to us through the end of the fiscal year, so maybe we can decide how we're gonna proceed from there.
Any questions or comments or concerns to the superintendent?
Well, they be working on the policy as well, because I know that's part of the day-to-day operations, will they be working with us on?
Yeah, I met with our internal staff, who really are, you know, large users of legal services, and so that's one of the things that we want to focus on. We want to really try to improve, you know, the adoption of new policies, because sometimes I think we're given too many different alternatives that aren't really necessary when we already have policies. So I think our focus moving forward will be, you know, if there are new policies that we need to adopt, to get those done, but also to look at existing policies and try and streamline that process.
Any other questions or comments to the superintendent? If not, we will process into executive session per our regulations 12122, G1, to consider personnel matters. The board will adjourn into executive session for the purpose of considering personnel matters dismissal for a public employee or official of a school district. And so at this time, we'll take... So moved. Second. Been moved properly seconded. Roll call?
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mrs. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Lasher?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.